Good evening and welcome to the December 8th, 2015 school committee meeting. We're happy to have you join us. This meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Media. The school committee would like to recognize and thank Tim Riley of East Hampton Media for taping tonight's production. East Hampton Media Channels 191, 192, and 193 is looking for volunteers. If anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please contact Kathy Lynch at (413) 203-1360. Superintendent Fallasby?
I have a few announcements this evening. The next school committee meeting is January 4th, 2016, immediately following the swearing-in ceremony of the school committee members. Meetings will be scheduled and posted as required by law. Navigating preschool for parents of children with special needs will meet December 9th at 6:30 at the high school. There's a gingerbread house party for the elementary students at Pepin on December 9th from 6:30 to 7:30. The winter music concert is on December 10th at 7 o'clock at the high school. There's a grandparents luncheon at White Brook Middle School also on December 10th. There's a band concert at White Brook Middle School for the 5th grade at 5:30 and 6th through 8th grades at 7:15 on December 17th. There's a half-day of school on Friday, December 11th due to teacher professional development, and there is no school Thursday, December 24th through the end of December due to Christmas, New Years, and winter break. Students will return to school on Monday, January 4th, 2016. There's no school on Monday, January 18th due to Martin Luther King holiday. There's no school on Monday, January 25th due to Teacher Professional Development Day and semester change. And there is no school February 15th through 19th due to Washington's birthday and winter break, a little bit down the road here. And I also wanted to just tell everyone that there is no longer a district event calendar on the website. We did have a few parents asking about that and why there wasn't information on that calendar. Instead, when I do my superintendent updates every Monday, I'm including all the events that are going on in the district. So, the update is always on the website, and it will go in email to any parents and family who have sent their emails into their schools. And there's a link to that website, or rather, to that update on the website. So those are the ways you can get the, all the events for the district. In addition to that, the school events will be on each of the school calendars on the website. So we're trying to give all that information to you in the ways that we think might be the most easy to access. Any questions, just give me a call. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any correspondence?
I do not believe so.
Okay. And do we have any gifts?
I do not believe so. I am still waiting for this to fully load. Confirm that.
Confirm you have gifts.
Thank you. All right. Motion to accept with gratitude and appreciation the following gifts. Mr. Richard Gagnon for the donation of the Tabletop Bear purchased at the East Hampton City Arts Bear Fest Auction to Maple School. There it is. Mr. and Mrs. Dennis Grimaldi for the donation of $1,600, 600 of which is earmarked for Maple Community themed photo project with the remainder for student activities at Maple School. And to James and Sheila Hickson for the recent donation to purchase books in Rebecca Madera's classroom at White Brook Middle School. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We thank you very, very much.
And if I could just add a comment here as well, we also have put a new dropdown, or a new link in the dropdown menu under District on the website where we're, it's called "Donations," and we've listed all the donors for this year, the 2015 year, in recognition of all those who've been so generous to help support the activities and programs in our schools. And we will continue to update that list, and again, we are so grateful for the generosity of this community.
I was going to express a similar sentiment, and we had asked for our donors to be tallied, a list compiled of all of our donations for 2015, and I'm just pleased to report to everyone that we have received $45,384 in 2015 from very generous donors, both businesses and the people of East Hampton. So, we're truly grateful. Their gifts have enriched the educational experience of our students immensely, and we're very grateful. And we would love it if you'd take a look at that list on the website and thank the people or the businesses, if you see them, for what they've done for our schools. That would be wonderful. So, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. We thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to the public speak portion of our meeting. If anyone is here and would like to address the committee, this would be the time to do so. You just ask that you state your name and where you're from, and it doesn't look as though anyone is here to do that at this time. So, we are going to move on to a presentation from Mr. Andrew Foster.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Should I be over here?
Sure. Yeah, that'd be great.
Hi.
Andrew Foster, 45 Brick Street. I'll give you the quick rundown. Yeah, office race, exactly. So, two years ago, myself had an idea to create a new event to fundraise for the schools. I wasn't sure, I'm a school teacher in Northampton. I wasn't sure exactly what to fundraise for, but I had an idea to organize a 5K race in town to fundraise for something. So, Mr. Goldstein and a bunch of other people on my committee decided to survey the local teachers in the elementary schools. And that survey results came back that teachers were interested in upgrading technology in the schools as well as possible. So that became our goal, was to fundraise and have an event to raise money to buy tech improvements, which is sort of a general term. That's where Mr. Barstow comes in, in that we brought that information to him, and then we discussed it and thought, what exact improvements could we make that purchase? So, last year we had our first event called the Apple a Day 5K. We held it at the new high school, which last year was brand spanking new. We had about 200 participants, and we raised a little over $4,000.
We did.
You were one of them.
My band.
Yeah, and your band was there too. This past year, on December 1st, December 1st, seems like a very long time ago now, we had our second event, second Apple a Day 5K. We had over 300 people participate this year. We had events for kids and grownups, really high number of kids participate. So, people donated money through registration for the event, and also local businesses donated. We had almost $6,000 donated from local businesses, particularly Nikki Dees and A-Z Building and Property. Each gave, Nikki Dees is actually our primary, our platinum sponsor this year, and they were really happy to do it, really enthusiasm, and they brought bags and gave them to children as well as they crossed the finish line. It was a little over the top, but that's kind of how they roll. But, Mr. Barstow and I want to present you with a check today. I'm actually going to present it, I guess, to Mr. Barstow officially, so that he can go out and have a good holiday. But our final numbers for the check, and again, I want to thank the sponsors and the people that came to the event and think about participating next year. I know we have a nice picture of you participating in the event that I got in my mailbox one day.
Oh, yeah?
From the first year. So, our final check is presented to the school committee and Mr. Barstow for tech upgrades is for $8,520.91. And we are not done. There you go.
Thank you very much.
So, we've already talked about next year's event, we've already started to plan for it, improvements, changes, but, and they're not major, but we want to keep building this thing, and now that we have some inertia going, it'll work really well.
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Ashley, do you want to talk a little bit about what you're?
I'd like to say that we're very excited about everything Andrew and the Apple 5K's been doing for us.
November 1st, November 1st.
That's why I'm so...
I'm trying to block it out as best I can.
I've been working with the elementary school principals, and it looks like we're going to be able to outfit an entire cart of computers that will accommodate a full classroom with this funding. So that's going to go a long way with them being able to use them. And this moves them from older computers that lasted like an hour to ones that will run all day. So, that's, it's going to really enable them to use the computers on a regular basis. So, I think we're really excited about this. I know that elementary principals and some of the teachers are already anxious regarding to get their equipment. So, I want to say thank you again for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Can I just say real quickly, participating in that as a volunteer, and it's a big feat. I mean, I've organized a lot of community events in past lives, and it's, you know, the first three, four, five years in, it's not yet quite a plug-and-play kind of activity.
Agreed.
And it's a lot to put together those pieces, and so, I think for the inertia that you spoke of, the energy of the day was really just positive, and everywhere you went, people were smiling and cheering, and Maron and his family putting in a lot of volunteer coordination, which is another huge piece of this. So, those things don't go unnoticed.
We had a really good committee of about six, we have a small but very dedicated group of people. For two years now, I mean, everybody came back the second year, which I think speaks well to the function of the committee as well.
Well, it doesn't go unnoticed, and it was a pleasure to participate in.
Yeah, but thank you for saying so.
Everybody.
I noticed too, it just seemed like it was very, very well-run and smooth, and everyone was so excited, the energy was incredible, and it was wonderful.
Thank you.
We're so very excited to have this and to have this opportunity to purchase new technology. We can't thank you enough for all your hard work. Because I do know, I ran into Andrew in the grocery store, I think about that time, and he was...
We ran into each other a lot.
I think he was feeling a little tired. Yeah, so thank you very much for all your work.
I can only imagine the number of hours that you put in to make that happen.
I'm a teacher, I have summers off, right?
Thank you.
But this year we also had like upwards of 80 kids also run. So, it's also just great, many different generations running and walking and everything.
The support and enthusiasm for the schools is amazing.
That's great.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, you guys did a great job.
Thank you again.
Fantastic to see you next year.
Yes, we'd like that.
Okay, at this time, I'd just like to take a minute to announce that this is our last regular school committee meeting for 2015, and as a result, it's the last meeting that we have. School committee members.
Thank you for coming.
Lori Ingraham, Laura Scott, Dan Carey, and Wendy Blumenthal with us. It's tough to say goodbye to this outstanding group of school committee members, and we just want to take a minute to say thank you to all of you for the hard work that you've put into this effort, for your dedication, for your time, for sharing your talents with us, for your passion for East Hampton Public Schools. We are truly grateful for your years of service. And I'd like to especially note Lori Ingraham, who's been here for eight years.
I know.
That's quite a long time.
Very good.
And unfortunately, the four of them chose not to run again for another term, but we are immensely grateful for their years of service with us, and we're going to miss you a lot. We're going to miss your contributions and miss you, miss working with you. And we want to have a little celebration with cake, or not celebration, but farewell time.
Celebrate.
Farewell time with cake in the other room later at the end of the meeting, and if anyone out there wants to come and join us at the end of the meeting, please do so.
Well, and Deb, I think we could celebrate the years that we've had you as school committee members.
Right.
And I just have to say that I couldn't ask for a better school committee, and how much I've enjoyed working with you, and how collaborative it's been, and how supportive I've felt. So, you will be greatly missed, and so, I think we should celebrate these wonderful years that we've had you here on school committee, and thank you for your dedication. And I know it's a big time commitment, and I know you've gone above and beyond the meetings here to interact with me and with the schools, so we're just so very grateful for that and for your time and your dedication. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And I just want to say that I got involved because with working full-time, it was a great way for me to be involved with my kids during school. So, if anybody, you know, feels that they can't volunteer during the day, this really is, it's a good way to know what's going on in the schools and just, you have a lot to say here, and so, it's just, it's a really good opportunity for people.
Agreed.
I've enjoyed it.
So, we have a certificate that we want to give you. We thank you very, very much.
Deb won't relax unless everyone cries tonight.
That's my thing, just always cry.
Just cry.
Thank you very, very much.
I'll give you a hug when we celebrate.
Yes.
Celebrate, sort of. Not really.
I'll give you a hug now.
All your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you for your years, wonderful service.
Very welcome.
For our community.
Thank you.
Tough meeting.
Tough meeting.
Can I say something for two minutes? It might sound like it's starting off not so hot, but many people know that I ran for school committee because my daughter was entering kindergarten at the time, and my first reaction was to follow a path that we've advocated against, and I was entertaining, choicing out. And I got involved in school committee and ran, and I wouldn't have my daughter in any other district than this district now. And it's being in this role and getting to know the administrative team, the leadership team, the teachers firsthand, the vision of the district, and how committed everybody is in this district. And I go to bat and go to the mat on a pretty regular basis for this district, as we all do, but I do it with a full, full heart now, and there's not a question ever in my mind. And she's in 2nd grade now, and she'll stay here. This is her home district, and I believe in everything that is done in this district, and Nancy, your leadership. And I might not be sitting here after tonight, but I'll be out there, and I'll be on your phone and in your office, and you're not going to get rid of me.
That's good news.
I fully support everything you guys are doing, and I've been honored to be a part of it.
Thank you, Wendy. Thank you for all the wonderful things that you've said about our schools.
It's a good place.
Okay, moving on. We'll move to the finance subcommittee report. Do we have a report, Dan?
No, nothing at this time.
Okay. How about our policy subcommittee?
I do, and I also have to ask, I believe I sent minutes, so I think I need to get minutes in for the last, we met, the policy subcommittee met at the last school committee, and I did send the minutes, but I'll resend them. I don't think I forgot any. It was our last school committee meeting, because it was before, so it was November 11th, I think, I was just looking it up. So, but we have, we, actually, I should probably first say that the policy subcommittee is trying to get a meeting together before the end of the year to go over the transportation policy. So Wendy, maybe we can touch base after 2:00.
Definitely.
But, so we're still trying to coordinate our schedules on that. And in your packet, there is a second reading for the physical restraint of students, and this is a required policy that just needed to be updated. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of the physical restraint of students, which is policy JKAA.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, collaborative for educational services, do we have an update?
Yeah, we just had a meeting, oh my gosh, I think it was the week before last, and the collaborative's gone through their major annual audit, and I have that, I can present, I only have a hard copy at this point, Nancy, so I can either leave it with you or scan it in and send it, but everything was clean and clear, and they're in a good spot. And the next meeting is January 27th, so part of, probably, part of your agenda at that January meeting and the election of officers is getting someone on board to represent East Hampton to attend the collaborative meetings. They alternate between Whately and Northampton, although I think the Whately location is, that's, might be off the table in the new year, so they're looking for somewhere in the northern end, they try to alternate them. It's been a very, it's been a very positive thing to be a part of. For one, to learn how much is available via the collaborative, and to learn how much East Hampton is already participating. We do a great job of, I think, tying in with the services that are available in the community with other districts and with the collaborative in general, but also just to really, you know, we're in this, this place right now, I think, as a region, and as a state, and as a country, of a lot of policy shifts. And so, it's a, it's a large body within the field of education to really have, to have your voice be heard and do that from a large group. So, I, and there's good food. It's a bonus.
And if I can, it's also a great networking opportunity for the school committee members too, so.
You know, the people that attend that, that are the representatives from the different school committees are really passionate about what they're doing, they're there to work. The meetings can be very long, but they are only every other month, so they make up for that. But they're good, it's a good group of people, it's good work. Very good, I'd highly recommend it.
Okay. We might need to have you come back and do this pitch on the eve of the beginning of January. Thank you very much. And our student representative isn't here this evening, so we'll...
Move to superintendent's report.
Yes.
I'm thinking that maybe we could move up the East Hampton Friends of Football.
Okay.
Because Dale will be doing the budget and the owner's project, and that she can do them one after the other.
Okay, that sounds good.
So, I'm going to change the order of the superintendent's report to benefit those of you who are here representing East Hampton Friends of Football, and I think you wanted to come and talk to us about a Conservation Preservation Act request, so if you'd like to come to the podium, that would be great. And this is the group that we owe a great debt of gratitude to for our new football field, which is absolutely wonderful, and just a pleasure to be there and watch the football games now. And no one's getting injured.
Hi there. Patty Dockerty, 82 Lovefield Street. I'm the athletic director for East Hampton High School. I just wanted to start off before introducing Tom Hogan, who can talk about the specifics of the project that we want to apply for funding for. So, the project is to get lights on our field. We had, you know, this is, we had this great field redone, it's beautiful, it's, you know, again, safer. It was held up so we could play games in November instead of having to rent Williston, because once, you know, the old field got too cold and messy, we just couldn't play on it anymore. So, clearly, that was a really positive thing for our program. So, in terms of lights, I was just talking with Tom, our division that we're in, every other school has lights on their football field except for Cathedral, although we think they're getting lights with their new, because they're becoming Pope Francis. So, right there, that, you know, tells you that where the leagues are going, where the divisions are going, and what we're sort of up against. We, all our games are played on Friday nights at other towns, and all our games are played, our home games are played Saturday afternoons. Additionally, there's a lot of changes going on right now in, in the football program across the state. They're realigning divisions, things are becoming more serious, more legitimized, more professional, if that's, that's kind of a weird word to use for school sports, but that's what's happening. Currently, you know, we're being moved up a division, and, you know, again, those schools that we're competing against, they're playing on these lighted fields all the time. So certainly, there's also a competitive edge there. Finally, well, not finally, in terms of the program itself, just like with the football field, it created excitement around our program. Our youth program is really doing well, and for kids to, you know, sort of dream about the day, you know, they can come out and play on, under the lights Friday night, you know, adds excitement to our program. It adds to our, to our, you know, the kids who are training in the youth program and getting up to the high school level with, you know, with that experience behind them. Sort of a, but then aside, but not really, is our JV program. We had problems this, this past season because our JV, our JV games are played after school, and if you don't start by 3:00, you can't get that whole game in. And because, again, we're being, we're, we're going to be in a more competitive league, our JV players need to get playing experience, and for them to have their last three or four games of the season cut short because we don't have lights on our field, doesn't give them the experience they need to play at the next level, and that's a safety issue for our guys. They need to get out there as much as they can. And because of the, because of some of the schools we play against, sometimes their teams don't have JV teams, so we can't, you know, we can't sort of stunt their growth because we can't provide the right facility for them. And all of that is, you know, I think, enough, but in the real world, also, we know that our schools are up against, you know, our budgets, and we know that the athletics budget is pretty small comparatively. And one of my goals is to create revenue for our athletics program, so we don't have to go back to the general budget and ask to take from there. Friday night games are going to bring more revenue, period. And that's also what we need to improve our programs. And, you know, it's sort of cyclical, we need revenue to improve our programs, we need to improve our programs to create more revenue. This is one way we can really create some excitement, create, you know, more revenue, more revenue for East Hampton Friends of Football who have done so much to support this high school program. And the fact that, you know, they're putting together, they're putting in all this work for us, the school department, so we can go to CPA and work together with them to get this project done, you know, we, I really want to make sure we're supporting the work they're, they're doing. So, as you know, they can apply for the CPA funding, we have to do it as the school committee, so I'm asking for you to support that, and Tom and I will do a lot, and Amy and Shannon and Ron will do, will do all the work, and then you guys can get to say you've got lights on your field at East Hampton. I'm sure you have questions about the plan. Tom does have a great plan in place, and he's ready to take that to the CPA committee on Thursday with this committee's blessing. So, I don't know if you want to talk first, or if you want to ask me questions, or ask Tom questions.
My first question was going to be, so you are on the CPA agenda?
No, the application deadline for the next funding cycle is the 20th, so we didn't want to get on the agenda without your blessing, and so, we're here, and if we get that, I'll submit the application tomorrow.
That's your deadline to get the application in?
Yep.
Yes, because they only fund, and me, well, they don't meet quarterly, but they only fund quarterly now, so you're well aware.
Yep.
Your group is well aware of how, of how they work.
Deadlines, we know.
And I have a feeling that you're going to answer most of my questions just by what you're going to say, so.
So do you want to?
I'd be glad to.
That'd be great.
Thanks.
I'm Tom Hogan, with the EFFA. I remember it was a meeting just like this when we started the last application. Of course, we didn't know exactly how that was going to turn out, and although we believed we knew how it was going to turn out, we're more than pleasantly surprised at how much positive feedback we got from all of our friends in the Western Mass youth football and cheer community. So I think that's, we're really proud of that, and, you know, we're proud of how the field has performed and how it's brought those portions of the community and others together. I, a large part of my role with the EFFA is a bit of a kind of liaison from a technical perspective when it comes to the things related to the field, so when they think about having these, these applications, I'm always happy to be involved. So, being involved with the last field improvement application, I feel, I feel I'm in a good position, we'll talk about any of the technical elements related to the field and how we went about developing the design that we have for lighting. We first sought out who would, who we would probably consider some of the better lighting vendors, and just by virtue of looking around and finding out who does this stuff, and we talked with some of those folks, and we figured out what would be the standards to properly light a field like this. Does it fit on our field? It does. Do we have the power to supply it? We do. Where would the poles go? We know where they could go. And who would be the kind of contractor who would be qualified to do it, and we've talked to these folks, and we feel like we have a pretty good idea on the scope, schedule, and the cost to do this. We put that information in our application. We're looking forward to discussions with the CPA, and then engaging with them in a meaningful talks and discussions, and then hopefully with their blessing, go out to bid for the project and have it ready for this coming season. So, if there's any, I think from a technical perspective, I could try and answer, I'd be happy to.
Now, technical, have, so obviously, you've met with all of them, you said you have your scope of the services, so what have you, where are you at the pricing point? You know what your, what your request is going to be through CPA. You're well aware that CPA likes people to have skin in the game?
Yep.
So, I'd be interested in that.
We can talk, we can talk about that. There's a lot of different ways to, to look at that, but let me tell you exactly what I have, exactly where I am, because if we feel there's something more that I should get... Because if we feel there's something more that I should get, I'll try and get it. With, we talked with two different lighting companies. One is Musco, and, and they're a very popular brand. The other one escapes me right now. We took both of their prices for this type of field, and we carried the higher price. Now, of course, being an out-to-bid project, we, we don't know what the contractor's going to come back at. We can guess, and we think we have, or we can estimate. We think we have good basis for the estimates that we are going to go to the CPA with. And just like the field project, we're going to be straight up front with them, and we're going to, we'll tell them we don't know exactly what it's going to come back at. We see that in, in town with a variety of projects. So, we, we talked to some of the installers, and we have an idea what they would. On a number of occasions, we've met down there with some of these folks. What's it going to take to do this? Is that all in? Is that complete? Do you see what we got? Sure you see this? We feel confident. At the end of the day, if we go out to bid at our time and expense, and it comes back something that, you know, we missed something, that's on us. You know, and, you know, we're not, we realize that. But we feel like we've done the homework. We feel like we have a good handle on what we have for our infrastructure at the field. We have a high confidence level that we're going to be able to do this for the dollar amount, under the dollar amount that we're submitting the application for. The application looks a little different than it did last time. We had a very specific dollar amount. And I think we learned a little bit that, you know, if the bids come in higher than that, it's a difficult thing to deal with because you can't go back and renegotiate with the CPA. So, we're going to explain this to them, and then we're going to cater our application any way they feel comfortable. So, so we've met with these vendors. We haven't talked with CPA. We, we felt, we felt that it, we should be here having this discussion before we engaged in that group. That seemed like the logical way to go.
And my understanding, Mayor Karen, is that the request has to come through the school department? They had to have the, the backing of the school department. I think that's how we did it before.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's right. They, they won't fund a private organization.
Well, what they, what they actually do, if you're lucky and succeed like last time, what they do is they'll send me a request to fund it, to use CPA funds to fund it. So I would put forth on a request to use that CPA funding. So the funding is from me. But obviously, needs school backing, and it would be a school project. As, you're well aware of this, you, you know, you've done this the last time around, so. You know, it is difficult if, if you haven't been, but you've spent a lot of time in front of CPA. So you know how detailed they are. Whatever requests you have, if you have your request organized, detailed, it just moves the process.
Yeah. We feel like we have a good application, and, you know, what they feel is, is not quite there. We'll just get it, and that's on us.
And you do clearly have the support of the school department. We would be very excited to have lights on our football field. And we're thrilled with the football field and how that turned out. And, and to join the other districts that, you know, our teams play and have lights and be able to play on a Friday night, I think that'd be huge for, for all of us, so.
Appreciate it.
Do we need to take a formal vote? Okay.
Can I ask a quick question? Just when you, it sounds like you already have an application put together?
An applicant, yes. We have a draft application, and I would say, pending any comments that we hear tonight that change that.
Could I either ask, inquire, or suggest, or all of the above, that lighting include, I mean, we're, we're a green community. We're, we haven't, we're not on track at this point for meeting our green community's goal. And we know that the schools consume the largest proportion of electrical consumption in the municipality by a long shot. So, new lights, I would hope that there's some consideration being given to doing that in the cleanest, greenest way. Because you might get these put on the field, but we're going to be eating the cost to keep them lit for days and years to come.
Absolutely. I, I know every vendor of that must meet federal, federal regulations for energy code. Of course, we have minimum lighting standards that we must keep for safety purposes, and that's why we light it. Anything that we can do that's along those lines, we'd be happy to do. And I'll, and I'll ask the vendor what exactly is able to, is consistent with both of those interests.
Thank you.
Would this be an opportunity where we could discuss what that ballpark figure was for the application?
You mean the dollar amount? We, we believe the cost will be under a hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
I think your strategy is sound, too.
Thank you.
And as in the past, are the friends also doing fundraisers and to put some, some, you know, of the cost forward, some of the funding for the cost forward? Because you know that's what the CPA is going to be asking for.
Yeah, and we, um.
I mean, I know you've done fundraisers and raised so many money, so much money, and.
All the time, and, you know, there's a lot of different ways that our money is contributed to the community. You know, whether it's directly to this, to the light bulb itself, or it's to the program directly in the way of supporting. How do you measure that? But we, you know, we're happy to engage in that discussion with the CPA, because I know it will.
They're going to, they're going to want, they're going to want to know exactly, you know, what you propose to put in.
Yeah.
Amy, Amy.
This is where Amy comes in.
This, I was just going to say, this is where Amy's going to.
So Amy Guyatt, I actually live in Southampton, but I'm the president of East Hampton Friends of Football. We will discuss it with CPA. There is precedent that they've given money to actually soccer fields, and the youth soccer program didn't give in any money. So, we'll have discussions with CPA about that.
I would think if I were you and I'm making that argument, I would demonstrate to them all the other ways that you're contributing to the program at large.
Oh, absolutely.
And that donation that you're requesting from the CPA is to fund one very specific part of a very large, expensive program.
I mean, we, East Hampton Friends of Football has already agreed to maintain the field, which is thousands of dollars a year.
Which is where I would go with that.
Exactly.
I wouldn't bring up, you know, pit one against another. I would bring up exactly where you're going.
My point was that there's precedence.
It doesn't always have to be dollars and cents.
Right.
Maintenance is a huge savings in dollars and cents, so I would definitely head in that direction.
Yes. I'll be a little more diplomatic. But there definitely, as I was just saying, there is precedence that there doesn't actually, there have been programs that have been funded, and other organizations have shown in-kind donations, which is what we are willing to do.
Exactly. Which is still called skin in the game.
Absolutely.
That's what I'm talking about.
We have lots of skin. We have pigskin in the game.
Any other questions?
I would just like to say that we are very grateful to have your support for the phase one of the program, and then to continue on on phase two and three and four. Who knows what those look like? But we, we are very grateful that you guys have, have backed. We're just excited to see what's going to happen in the future, so. Friday night lights?
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, so we need a motion?
A motion to endorse the East Hampton Friends of Football's application to the Conservation Preservation Act.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.
We can't thank you enough for all that you, all that you do for our football program. We're very grateful.
It's very exciting. Thank you.
We're glad to do it.
Thank you.
Yeah, why don't you? So I'm going to take the contractual stipend increase for the athletic director next. And so I, I think Patty's going to stay in case there are any questions. But I did, I did include the, the updated job description in your packet. And so the reason we have to come to you as a school committee about increasing this stipend, which would be increased from fifteen thousand, currently about fifteen thousand to twenty-five thousand, is now that Patty's taken over and with the new state regulations and requirements, there's a tremendous amount of work. So Patty really is working well beyond the hours that she's paid for. The money is in our budget already for coaching positions that we aren't using. And so Patty's had a conversation with me and with Dale Doran, our Director of Business Services. And Dale concurs that this is a sound financial decision. Patty has all kinds of wonderful ambitions to grow our programs, to attract more students to athletics, to collaborate with our community programs. And so I'm totally in support of this, and I hope you will be as well. The reason we need a vote is because it is in the contract. It's a contract stipend for fifteen thousand dollars and seven, fifteen thousand seventy-seven dollars. And to change that stipend amount takes a memorandum of, of agreement between the school committee and the union. I did get the union president. He very willingly and supportively signed the MOA today. So what we're here tonight to do is to request your support of that MOA as well so that we can increase that stipend and, and move a little in the direction to, of compensating our athletic director for all the many hours and the wonderful work she's doing in our district.
So moved.
Okay, you're, you're making a motion?
Unless you want a discussion.
Uh, no, we can, we can ask after you make a motion.
No, go ahead.
No, 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 go ahead.
I was, I just didn't, I want to repeat it. We don't have to repeat it.
Okay, no, you have to repeat it. Yeah, you have to say it.
Nice try, Wendy. Do, you want me to do it again?
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Uh, motion to accept a contractual, can, accept, yes? Motion to accept a contractual stipend increase for the athletic director?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Do we need to stipulate the dollar amount that's moving from in two?
Two.
Just two.
Two. What is it, twenty-five?
Increase to twenty-five thousand dollars annually?
Yes. Any, it's, we have a motion. It's been seconded. Any discussion, questions? Okay. Of Lori?
Questions? No, I just, I think Patty does a fabulous job in her role, and she's a great athletic director, and we're very lucky to have her, so.
Yes, I would second that comment. We are very, very fortunate to have her in this position, and she puts in a tremendous amount of time. And we're very fortunate, yes. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you, Patty.
Oh, and I'll send you guys a schedule and hope to see you guys on some of our games.
Yes. And thank you for keeping us updated on that. That's, that's great.
Thank you, Patty. Okay. Oh, it's your.
I'm still on board here. So, I'm now going to introduce Dale Doran, our Director of Business Services. Dale's going to talk about two things, report out on two things for us. One is the owner's project manager request for services. And the other is a budget management update. So Dale, do you want to come to the podium, please?
So as I think you know, we are at the beginning of the feasibility phase for a proposed building project, during which a design team will come on board to look at a number of options and price those options and help the community, the committee come to a consensus around a recommendation to go forward with. And the very beginning of that process is to get on board a position that's called the owner's project manager. And it is somebody to shepherd the process through to protect the owner's interest in the project. And the very beginning of that is to issue a, a request for services for anybody who might be interested in doing that work, and then go through a selection process to pick the person best suited for the work for East Hampton. So you've got two things in your packet that, that pertain to the, this issue. One is a request for services that was drafted, and I, I wanted to take a second to acknowledge Melissa Zawadzki, the city finance director who did the first draft of this. And then she and I worked together on it to bring it to this point. It went before the East Hampton School Building Committee about a week ago now. And they were comfortable with it and took a vote that it's ready to be released. But part of the process is for this committee to approve its release this evening as well. So that's one vote that you would be asked to do tonight. Another is to authorize the advertisement of this RFS. Sort of goes hand in hand with this, a little bit repetitive. But that's the other vote that you need to take. And, and finally, to approve an owner-project manager selection committee. And there's a memo in your packet that details the recommended members of the committee. It's the mayor, the superintendent, the city finance director, myself, and then a member of the school building committee, David Boyle. And David Boyle was selected to serve in this role by the building committee at the meeting that I, I referenced a little earlier. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about either the RFS. Oh, I should say about the RFS, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, who is acting agent in this process, has a pretty prescriptive process and has developed documents that over time they have found had been led to successful projects. So we had a template from which to develop the RFS from them. And there really was limited leeway in, in what could change. Customized to describe East Hampton, but other than that, it was pretty prescribed because it has proven to be successful in previous projects across the Commonwealth.
Are these, are we meant to do these in any particular order? They're numbered one, two, three in this memo. Is that the order we?
Not, not necessarily. It's just.
We should probably start with number two, then.
Okay.
Right?
Sure.
Motion to approve the request for services for an owner-project manager?
Second.
Any discussion, questions?
Amen. Hallelujah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes?
Motion to authorize the owner-project manager selection committee with the following members? David Boyle, Karen Catter, Dale Doran.
Dale, help me.
You got it perfect.
Ah! Nancy Follensby, and Melissa Zawadzki?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm seconded.
And motion to authorize advertising the request for services for an owner-project manager consistent with the Massachusetts School Building Authority guidelines?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Should I just move into the, the next item? Superintendent Follensby asked me to come this evening to speak to you a little bit in terms of updating you on the budget management activities that we've been engaged in since the beginning of the year. And this is coupled, you, a little later in your agenda, the next agenda item, you'll see you have a number of budget transfer requests again, and you've been seeing a lot of those. So, part of the reason that I'm here is to explain why that is. We've, since I came on board in July, we've been trying very hard to align the budget funding in terms of the lines where the money is with the real spending needs in the district. And I think that's a really important thing to do for two reasons. One of which it makes, is that it makes the budget much easier to monitor and manage if the money's in the right place. And, and the second reason is that it gives you a head start on budgeting for the next year if the money's in the right place in the previous year, and you understand what you're spending it on and why. So, and I, I would say, I guess, the third reason why this was important to me, I think those are really two really important reasons. But it's been a very useful exercise for me as a new person to understand what's in your budget and how it works to do this as well. So, all fall, you've seen a number of these budget transfers, probably more than you've seen and bigger transfers than you've seen. But it's to get the money aligned to where the real spending needs are, where our commitments are for this year. And we recently, the district leadership team recently had a conversation about entering into the beginning stages of budgeting. about entering into the beginning stages of budgeting for the next year. And the approach that there was consensus that we would take is to take a really, although it's a little more time and labor intensive, to take, this year to take a really hard look at what we've been spending on and why and sort of build from, from there. What the, what we know the real needs are in the right categories and get the budget to align with that for the upcoming year. So we've identified a number of steps that will help us to do that. And right now, I'm in the process of doing that first step, which is to get some information out to all of the building and program administrators so they have good historical data to look at when they're thinking about next year. And that was the update, unless anybody has any questions about that. Probably be hearing a lot more about the budget soon.
So your approach to budgeting, I know one time you mentioned in a finance subcommittee meeting that you met, you used the phrase zero-based budgeting, kind of looking at everything.
Yeah, and I don't, I really don't think you need to do that every year. But I think this year it's a really good time to do that. And that's sort of the approach that we're taking is to start from, you know, what do we need in this line from zero to deliver the services and programs that are needed next year.
I think that's exciting. I'm so grateful that you're doing that, then taking that approach and doing such a thorough job with all of that. I'm just really excited about that. I think that's gonna be wonderful for us.
And I can say from the, from both sides, from the school side, but from the city side, it's a pleasure working with Dale. It's been, it's been our extreme pleasure.
Thank you.
I'm not surprised. Yes, that's wonderful.
Thank you.
Questions for?
Makes sense, thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
And that's the end of my report.
Okay. So moving to our matters for action, why don't we start off with the minutes for the November tenth regular session?
Motion to approve the minutes from the school committee regular session met November tenth, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? You know, we also need to approve the work session minutes for that.
They're in here.
Right, okay. So do we wanna, someone wanna?
A motion to approve. I have your policy subcommittee minutes in here as well. Shall we do those next? Motion to approve the minutes from the school committee work session that took place Tuesday, November tenth, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
An abstain.
Abstentions? Okay.
So this policy subcommittee, are we ready to?
Well, I don't think we usually vote on it anyways. We just need to get it into the.
That's right. It threw me off because it was in here.
Okay.
I need cake.
Well, before, before that. Warrants and payroll.
Yeah. Motion to approve the school payroll dated November twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen in the amount of four hundred fifty-five thousand, four hundred twenty-nine dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
You know, I have to repeat it all now.
Uh huh.
Sorry to say.
No.
Peter. Okay, there's a motion and it's been seconded to approve school payroll dated November twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen in the amount of four hundred fifty-five thousand, four hundred twenty-nine dollars and twenty cents.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated November twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen in the amount of four hundred three thousand, nine hundred seventy-six dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Second.
Can't do it from memory. There's a motion on the floor and it's been seconded to approve the accounts payable. Payment dated November twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen in the amount of four hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six. Wait a minute, four hundred three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-eight cents.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay, we're good.
No, we have more. A motion to approve the school payroll dated December tenth, two thousand fifteen in the amount of four hundred sixty-two thousand, forty-eight dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and it's been seconded to approve the school payroll dated December tenth, two thousand fifteen in the amount of four hundred and sixty-two thousand, forty-eight dollars and twenty cents.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions?
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated December tenth, two thousand fifteen in the amount of five hundred thirty thousand, five hundred dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded to approve the accounts payable, payment dated December tenth, two thousand fifteen in the amount of five hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred dollars and seventy-five cents.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
One more.
Oh.
One more, sorry. Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated December seventeenth, two thousand fifteen in the amount of five thousand, four hundred twenty-nine dollars and thirteen cents.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated December seventeenth, two thousand fifteen in the amount of five thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirteen cents.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I'm just confused because it's December seventeenth. Is that, there's still another payroll though that we're gonna have to come and approve? I don't know, I think that one threw me off.
It's just the accounts payable warrant, that's it.
Okay.
So the payroll, there'll be payroll to sign the week of Christmas, yeah?
Week of Christmas.
Correct.
The twenty-second and twenty-third. And that'll be the last one in this term.
Right.
Sue, maybe you could also note for our agenda for our first meeting of the new year that we need to assign people to be regular signers. Okay. Signers, reviewers. Very good, thank you.
Okay, then we have our budget transfer requests. Are these four separate motions?
I believe we do. I think I have to repeat them, too.
Okay, so we'll start at the, this is system, they're ordered differently here. Wait a minute. Give me one second. Okay. Motion to approve the budget transfer request in the amount of six thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. From, do you, do you need me to say?
For special education.
Okay, for special education.
We don't need to say where it's coming from, just going to.
Second.
Okay, that was this one. So the total, it's, this one's confusing. The total is here.
Oh, okay, going here, okay. Okay, there's a motion on the floor and it's been seconded to transfer, make a budget transfer to, to, there are two special education accounts. Hold on, I scrolled down one. She said just to specify it as a special education budget transfer.
District office budget transfer request.
Okay, special ed, okay. There's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded to have a budget transfer to the special education district office account totaling six thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Motion to approve a budget transfer request in the amount of fourteen thousand, seven hundred dollars.
For system transfers.
For system transfers.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor for a budget transfer request in the amount of fourteen thousand, seven hundred dollars to system transfers. And that motion has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve a budget transfer request in the amount of twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars to system transfers.
Second.
There's a motion and it has been seconded to have a budget transfer in the amount of twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars to system transfers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve a budget transfer request in the amount of seven thousand, five hundred dollars to system transfers.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor for a budget transfer to, in the amount of seven thousand, five hundred dollars to system transfers. And it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. We now have an out-of-state field trip request to High Meadows and Granberry, Gran, Granberry, Granby, Connecticut.
Motion to approve the out-of-state field trip request to High Meadows and Granby, Connecticut. East Hampton High School students?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Should we know that that's their annual senior class?
Sixteen.
Yeah, I saw that. Five thirty-one, fifteen. It's next year. They're taking a DeLorean. It's gonna be great.
Okay, I'm sorry, what did you say next, Laura?
Just to note for the public that it's their annual senior class trip.
Right, 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 right. Yes. Highlight of senior activities. We also have a school choice opening request from Principal Belice. I don't have it. Okay, here we go.
It's stable. A motion to approve the request for one school choice slot for grade eight at Whitebrook Middle School.
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
Do you know anything about it, Nancy? Is there any for your?
We had a family who requested choicing into our middle school. And we did not have anyone else on the waitlist. And the principal determined that she could accept this choice student without increasing class sizes.
Do you have a motion on the floor? We have, we have a motion. Has it been seconded?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.